Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the strategic plan. With that roll call, please, Mr. Wray.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Here.
Scanlon. Snow. Underwood.
Here.
Vargas. Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Seven present. Six present, sorry.
And I know that Mr. Vargas may be coming late. He's been tied up in travel and Mr. Scanlon had a previous commitment, so he will be a bit late as well. So with that, I think we're turning it over to UPD Consulting to give us the workshop information.
I've been working very closely with the staff because, as you know, once the vision, mission, guiding principles, and objectives have been determined, it's up to your superintendent and his staff to really kind of work through the logistics in terms of strategies. After you have set the vision, mission, guiding principles, and determine which and how you're going to prioritize your objectives, it is then his job and the job of his staff to implement it to get it done. And your job, obviously, to measure their success and to gauge the timeliness of the implementation strategies. In year one, we worked with you in terms of, through a survey, to help to rationalize what would be the prioritization of some of the work. We, you know, obviously got feedback from you that that clearly wasn't enough. The survey in and of itself wasn't just enough in year one, but it, there was a lot on the table in year one. We've talked both, I guess, publicly and privately, just what was on the table and how ambitious it was, in addition to what had been clearly kind of defined in the strategic plan, to kind of push through and to work through in year one. But we recognize in year two that we want to not just do this work, but some of the boy training stuff that we've been doing, to really try to work through a clearer, stronger kind of understanding of what is important to you as it relates to prioritization of the objectives. And so beyond the survey work that has been done, we want to have a real conversation today and real back and forth, so we have a clear understanding of what matters to you. I think you'll be pleased, if you haven't already reviewed it, there's a lot to review. But I think you'll be pleased to see where there is alignment and synergy as it relates to prioritization of the principles and objectives. But throughout today, it's very important that no one hold back, right? That you're clear in kind of moving forward your thoughts. And because as what comes out of this really is going to direct the activities of your superintendent and his staff.
All right. So before we talk about year two and what we've done to understand priorities, just quickly, I want to reflect on year one. Here, this is also in one of the many documents you received. It is a diagram, just a table showing you that of the seven guiding principles, the strategies that were prioritized of each principle, what are their implementation statuses right now. So there's a lot of really good work going on. Any questions about, you know, yeah. Okay. Is this better? Oh. I've always wanted to use on a base. Okay. I feel like I've just been instructed.
And a belt or you don't?
I don't have really a belt. Sorry. Okay. Well, we kind of do.
Yeah.
All right. Great. Is this better? Oh, good. Okay. So year one, where we've gone to. Any questions about this? All of this came as of last week from strategy leads and the work groups. Okay. Excellent. So year two. Oh, yes, sir.
I'm just wondering for, I know we've got members of the press here. I don't know if we need to explain that to them and just...
Sure. Good idea.
Quickly, yeah, just quickly kind of jump through what it means because I think there's some pretty important data there.
Absolutely. So here we have, you could, a strategy can either, or an objective and strategy can either be in, so they've not started, and you can see that we don't have any not started of the prioritized strategies as of, for year one. Planning, so they're in the initial stages of the planning. They've perhaps created an action plan. They kind of know what they want to do, but they haven't done anything with it. Partial implementation, so this means that implementation has happened, but it's not, they wouldn't consider it to have all the steps that are critical for implementation to have begun. Full implementation, meaning everything is in implementation right now or actively being implemented. Progress monitoring, so this means, okay, implementation is complete, but now we're actively looking to make sure that what we expected to see, those results as a result of that implementation, is happening. So progress monitoring does not mean that work is done. It just means like we're looking at it, we're observing it, maybe not actively doing anything for each strategy. No status provided. We're just in the process of still working with OPS leaders to get some updates on just a few strategies. So you can see that there's a lot of progress being done, but progress monitoring, you can see a lot of green up here. All right. So for year two, to better understand where the district should prioritize their time and efforts, we surveyed the community. Of the community, we had 75 community members participate. We surveyed internal OPS staff, so teachers, administrators, non-instructional staff, and then also you, the board. A lot of this was made possible with, in collaboration with Matt Ray, Todd Andrews, and Scott Schmidt-Bonnie of Research to collaborate with the questions that we asked, the distribution, the promotion. We couldn't have done it without making sure that everyone got the message out there. And the survey was open for about a week. We also, to understand initially what executive council was thinking, we met with them last Thursday for three hours. We presented to them all the survey data, those survey write summaries that you received, they also received. And through the three-hour discussion, they came up with an initial list of objectives. Again, I want to stress that this is tentative, but we will get to that list so you can see where there's that alignment and synergy that Otis was talking about. Here's a map of Omaha and where the community member input came from. So if there's no number by the flag, then that just means one response from that zip code. I'll just take a moment so everyone can kind of see where responses are from. Are there any reactions or anything you'd like to share? Okay. I will say that we did learn that, I completely agree that 75 of the Omaha community is small, but given time of year, that it is actually a good turnout for community response.
Right. It may be, but I don't know that it's statistically relevant.
Sure.
It's not a representative, I mean, it's not a large enough number to really be representative of the community. Just, I'm not saying the responses are good or bad or anything.
Mm-hmm.
I just, you know, of a city of whatever we are.
Yep. Any other reactions? Or in general, to what I've described to you, what we've done thus far for prioritization?
I have a quick question. Were most of the community members, for some reason, when I was looking through the documents, it made me think that a lot of the community members were people who had participated in the strategic plan effort to begin with?
Mm-hmm.
Were they, or do you know that for sure?
We don't know that for sure.
Okay.
It's an anonymous survey. All of it was anonymous, so even teachers, you all, unless you put your name down, I know four or five of you, I think, did put your names down. Any? No? Okay. So year two, through, when we were talking to executive council, this diagram just displays, organizes where they're thinking. So the numbers are the objectives from the strategic plan that they think should be prioritized for year two. This bar down here of District Foundation, it's just saying, you know, if we prioritize 4.1 and 6.1, it just makes all of this a little bit easier, and we can be perhaps even more successful in implementation. But they're thinking, okay, students, which ones are directly linked to students? 1.1, 1.2, and 2.4. But then understanding that really, I mean, all of these objectives are eventually about the student and improving student growth. But parents, 5.1 and 5.3. Teachers and administrators, 2.4, 2.6, 3.1, and 3.2. And schools, 1.4, 2.2, and 2.3. Again, I just want to emphasize it's tentative. It's what they were thinking after working together for about three hours and discussing how they interpreted the data. And I should also mention to you that they did not have this document in front of them when they were doing it. So we developed this after talking to them and understanding their vision. Any questions or reactions to their initial thoughts? So quiet today. All right. So what I want to spend most of this, our time together, looking at is where there's alignment, or maybe not as much, understanding you as the board, remembering that we're staying on the objectives level, what do you think is important to be prioritized, considering the survey data we got from community members, your colleagues, and then internal OPS staff? Do these results that we have, that we're showing in this document, does this resonate with you? Thinking about how executive council prioritize these objectives, does this make sense? Do you have questions or concerns? Yes.
So this document, which is this one, is this?
Yes.
Put it, okay.
Yes.
Just making sure I'm following.
Yep. So that first column is where you put it. Or second, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Was she saying executive council?
What concerns or questions do you have regarding any of these specific objectives or set of priorities as a whole?
So, you know, one of the ones that jumped out at me is that nobody, I'll just use the blue as a way to identify what were the most commonly prioritized items. So if you take, just on this first page, for example, access to high-quality inclusive early childhood education to all students, that one got me thinking because we know, um, the bottom line. We know how important early childhood education is to this long-term success of students and especially students who are starting out disadvantaged in one way or another. And so I wonder if maybe, and this would go for several others too, it's just that this one's on the first page, is maybe the reason it wasn't prioritized higher by everyone, whereas the one about safe and secure buildings right above it was a high priority for every group, is perhaps because it's all students and it's so hard to provide early childhood education to every student in our district, and that maybe that's, you know, maybe it's in the targets that we've chosen or the way that we've worded them that we need to be, we know that there's, just staying on this one, for example, we know that there's perhaps higher priorities in our district for early childhood education than other areas of our district where it's less of a priority.
Mm-hmm.
And so I didn't know if that would have bumped it up if, and maybe the same would be true if we went through other strategies on subsequent pages, but if maybe it had been to provide access to high-quality inclusive early childhood education to our highest priority areas, if maybe that would have shot way up.
Right.
Because it's such a, there's just common knowledge and there's so much research about the importance of early childhood education, yet why didn't it rise to the top?
I think, a couple just initial thoughts, I think those are excellent points, but one, there is stuff in partial and progress monitoring, so that because it doesn't have that title prioritized, doesn't mean that like necessarily no work is happening. You just sort of, if you're prioritized, you have action plans, there's a bit more attention to, brought to those strategies. But I mean, that, you know, there's still, so I think you make a good point about maybe the wording, but also perhaps people feel like there is some work being done right now.
I'll see if I can fill in a little bit, maybe I think where the room was going. One, we are opening up two new edicare sites this next fall. Two, we have four new early childhood sites funded by the learning community that are going into place next year. So that's kind of your comment on, we're still working on it.
Mm-hmm.
And we're still moving forward on it. I think that was part of it. I think the other part of it is, we also know that as we get more space, because of some of the construction and bond issue changes, we recognize that we'll have more opportunities. Some sites that we would like to have early childhood, there's no room.
Right.
There's just simply no space today. So I think that's why it's there, but it doesn't mean like, for example, those six new sites, the two educares and the other two sites, those will still happen this next school year.
Okay.
So it's still there, but I think that's probably what they were thinking. That'd be my, as I listen to the room talk.
So work is happening, even if they don't get that label prioritized, it's still moving forward.
Probably wouldn't be stated.
Right. Probably wouldn't go part.
And that's, I think, what a lot of the elements, they'd say, well, which one has potential to be a stated item?
Mm-hmm.
Which doesn't mean the other item doesn't move forward, but it may not be stated, it may not have quite the amount of measuring of the metrics and measuring in a very visible fashion in the stats session.
Yep. Yes, sir.
But to the point, I guess Mrs. Fay says, and when I'm looking, I know we're on page one, but I'm looking through this, we can't accomplish everything.
Sure.
But if the board, school administration, teachers, non-instructional staff, central office, and other don't have high-quality early childhood education for students, then we're making some big changes in our school district regarding grading configuration and everything, on the assumption, part of it is to move early childhood in, the other one is longer time in middle school is better. But if those are the two main reasons, and one of those reasons, it appears that most of the people across the board are not saying this should be a high priority, then I think we, as a board, have to be responsive of that. We're an elected body and we represent constituents, and some of those are staff and some of those are a lot of other people, but clearly that shouldn't be our top priority at this point according to this. I mean, I just think it's valuable information as we move forward, and we're putting a lot of emphasis on early childhood education. I think there's some other areas we might need to emphasize a little bit more.
How do others feel about that? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I guess I think back to what Mrs. Fay said regarding the wording. So when it says inclusive early childhood, I mean, I think about my sub-district doesn't maybe need early childhood as a priority as much as another set of school buildings would. So it could be, part of it could be the wording piece on that, which I reflect back to what she said related to high priority needs. I think that we've all said here that, at the board table many different times, that early childhood in high priority buildings is very, very important to the success of the student long-term. So I don't know if, I think I'm just thinking back to maybe, was that part of the wording? And then a lot of it comes down to funding and whether we have the funding available and...
Right.
There's lots of questions around that, but I don't know that, I would say that it's not an important thing. I think early childhood is important, especially for high-needs students.
I do think it's important though to know, right, obviously, every, everything, everything within your strategic plan has value, right? And all these things are important. I don't, I think it's very important, excuse me, important like eight times 15, my apologies, but it's vital, that you don't kind of shortchange though what you've done and what your, and what your staff has done around prioritization. Like the very purpose of why we're doing what we're doing right now is to, is to make a determination around what are your kind of top priorities. That doesn't mean the important stuff is not going to get done.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that the relevant kind of specific needs of certain core constituency will get ignored. But part of the feedback that we heard from each of you, both individually and then as a group, was as a board, we need to play a very active and activist role in terms of helping to set the priorities, right? And so I don't want you to now kind of second-guess some of what you've done around the priority setting. If you read it and say, well, you know what, maybe I disagree, that's one thing, but don't feel that there is anything wrong with priority setting because it doesn't mean that you're going to ignore other things that are important. It just means you, in a world of finite resources, there are certain things that are going to rise to the top, you know? And if your constituency and your staff and you yourselves have identified certain things that rise to the top, that's okay. It's not a sin, it's not bad, you know? It's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I guess I look at, when we're talking, let's just say, since we're using early childhood education as the point, that's something for me, I think we spent a lot of time last year looking at, there's a lot of initiatives in early childhood. And so my thought was, this is something, the work has already begun, it's going on.
Right.
And, you know, what are we supposed to be focusing on for the next year? Because I believe that staff and building and our community partners are very much working on the early childhood piece.
Right.
And so I think that was my, that was my particular thought process. And so was it a high priority for this year's work? Not necessarily, because it was a priority that, we know it's a priority, but we can't continue to harp on it because the work is going on. And so let's figure out what the next thing is. And so that's how I took on that.
Yeah. I think we all acknowledge that it's all important or vital work, right? So, but just where are those resources going to go for those, you know, the prioritize one, understanding like, if we could prioritize all of them, we had all the resources and all the people, like, sure, but it's a robust strategic plan you all have, and so we have to prioritize year by year where to focus additional resources on. Yeah.
Could I also point out that exec council didn't necessarily fill out the same survey? The format of collecting the information is a little bit different.
Right.
So it's not that we didn't, nobody in the group thought 1.3 or 2.1 or any of the other ones that were marked weren't a priority, but that's why you see those blanks in those. So the collection was a little bit different in the way we prioritize versus the other groups.
Yeah. So if we look at page one and you see that where executive council has initially put their priorities for year two, does it make sense? Do you have questions? Do you feel like something might be missing? Everything in blue, in the darker shade blue, it's over 60% marked it a priority.
Is that moderate and high priority, or is it just high priority in the blue?
In terms of the responses in the survey?
Uh-huh.
It was the number of people, I would say moderate and high.
Okay.
Yeah. Does this resonate with you? Would you also, as a board, would you recommend that these be prioritized? Yes, sir. Yes, sir?
I would say the board's response.
I think you might need to turn your mic. Thank you.
If you look at the board's response, it's only 1.4 that is ours, and so that tells you, tells me that there's a, I would say a split, but where to be prioritized if the exec council's thinking 1.1 or 1.2, and you said over 60%, so that's majority, so right now, 1.1 and 1.2 isn't a high priority for the board.
Right.
Especially 1.2. I mean, even if you just had, if we put two, it'd be 1.1 and 1.4. So I think that's something that has to be, how do we iron that out? So if we do agree with something, we know that the exec council and the district isn't bringing stuff that wasn't set as a priority by the board, does it make sense?
Right, well, your recommendations for priorities.
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yes, ma'am.
And I did a little math, and I think it's just the highest priority.
I can, I can.
At least for the board of education one. But, and I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Snow, but at the same time, if everyone else, if school administrators and teachers, central office staff, parents and other people are saying this is a priority, we also need to listen to that voice, in addition to saying what we think is a high priority.
Yes, sir.
And I completely agree. I'm not saying that it's not, but in a perfect, a wise person once told me, in a perfect world, we could do all things, but in reality, if we really want to focus on something, be really great at something, we need to make sure that we, we can't do everything, that you said that just recently.
Right, sure.
So if we're really going to focus on something, is it going to be the two things, or is it going to be three things? I mean, we don't want to say we're going to, everything's a high priority and then we just get, I mean, half quality. I'm, I'm not saying we can't do this, but we are limited by funds and things that we have, so, I mean, my thing is, I don't even know, what, what can we do really well starting now? And what is something that we could put in the pipeline for year three that we could do? I just don't want us to get too many things that are high priorities, so at the end of the day, we're kind of, in my opinion, in the same.
There's so much breadth, right?
Yeah. So anything that comes up is a high priority.
Right. Reactions to that?
I guess I would be curious to know, in exec council, when you all went through the process of prioritizing, how did that conversation go as far as the capacity of staff to be able to actually focus on these items as a priority, based on the work that already had been started last year? So the knowledge of, we still have work going on, and then moving forward on some of these items, maybe in a wider breadth than what we were in the past year? So I'm just curious to know if everyone felt comfortable that this, these were items that they could take on? Because I do look at it and see the survey results, and I agree with Lacy, I think from the board of education, at least anyway, those were the high priority numbers and not moderate. So when I look at that, I see things that, you know, a lot of different groups felt were very important for us to tackle, but where did staff feel as though the capacity was and what they could take on this next year?
Mr. Evans, would you like to?
Sure, sure, sure. A couple of things. A lot of it has started, and so it's a continuation of the work and a continuation of a prioritization. I think that's what many folks I heard in the room echoing, because you're right and Mr. Snow's right, I mean, clearly, we've bitten a big bite of this apple, and we don't want to take such a big bite that we get choked. And I think that, that is an issue and a concern, but I think they felt more comfortable because we have started on each of those items, work has started, and you can see that reflected in the item, items up there. So I think that's where they felt comfortable, was we've started some of this work already, and we think, even if it ends up being a stated piece, we think we could stat this and do the measurables and show where we're at. So I think that's what I heard, and I, you know, Matt, you were in the room at the same time, I'd ask you to give feedback too on what we discussed with our colleagues.
Capacity was definitely brought up of, you know, just because you moved to another year doesn't mean you stop all the work that you're already doing, and that doesn't mean that just because the calendar switches, now you have a bunch of people waiting for 36 more strategies to do. So that, that was definitely a discussion of what are we, what still needs to continue and what can we keep adding to the plate without turning something off or stopping something? So it was a discussion. And just a little background too, we broke up in groups in exec council, there was three, four groups?
There were three groups.
Three groups, and, you know, some groups had a top four priority, some groups had a top 15 priority, so it differed on how many things that we prioritized as a group.
So these ones that we have were, you know, by consensus, we came together and we're like, okay, these are things that are based on our initial discussions, look at the survey, this is what we, where we're thinking about going for year two. But like everyone said, it's not like we're going to just stop year one work, but in addition to. And some of these are also priorities from year one, so like, one of the asterisks indicates that it was prioritized in year one. So in some cases, there could be continuation. Yes, sir?
Sorry, I probably, you probably said this earlier.
No, it's okay.
So the board, everybody else except the exec council just took the survey, is that correct?
Right, I mean, unless exec council took the internal survey, which we wouldn't know because it was just like central office staff, but we didn't make a push for them to take that, because we knew we'd be talking to them specifically.
But nobody really actually had a sit-down session, work group, and talked about it, other than the exec council to kind of prioritize?
No, we, yeah, we haven't met with other groups, it was all through a survey.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. So in terms of 1.1, we could, we could, would you like to go on to the next one? And we can kind of come back, we'll talk through all of them and then we can come back? All right. So the second page, seems like everyone was in consensus with 3.1. 3.1 was also one of the highest that principals added, and interestingly, we met with principals and other central office staff on Friday, and we asked them, just, you know, anecdotally, what are you, what does 3.1 kind of look like in your school? Some of the strategies, what have you done? What results have you seen? And, you know, they were just, it was a large group, so they're just shouting out answers like improved climate and decreased referrals, decreased suspensions. So like, they're, they're doing things that are also increased attendance, you know, that, that made, that, you know, you can kind of, you can understand why 3.1 was a priority to teacher, principals. Yes, sir?
And that is kind of a continuation to Mr. Snow's question. He asked about, did we have a separate meeting with any groups? Really, there's only three groups that have separate meetings. The school board tonight.
Yeah.
The executive council group on Friday, and then all the administrators. They spent, I don't know, two.
We were with them for about an hour, but I know that overall, they were there for several hours, that's it.
Three, yeah.
Yeah. And so we talked about the two highest priorities, what does that look like in your school? What's happening? And so, it was that, but it wasn't an intimate setting like this.
Yeah, yeah, that was a pretty big group.
Yeah.
All principals, assistant principals, so that's a pretty big group.
Reactions to some of the strategy, the objectives that executive council initially marked as a priority? No? No sort of questions maybe as to why they felt like this was a priority, or? Yes, ma'am.
I had a question on, and just to understand better, 2.5, when it talks about utilizing data to give students, educators and other stakeholders timely and actionable feedback, isn't that really what's happening with the statting process, but maybe not directly with the student, is that? Or am I off on that, on 2.5?
To an extent, yeah, I mean, through the stat process, we look at data, we help, those conversations like, all right, this is what data says, where, how do we, how are we going to use it? How, you know, then.
Right.
There are action items that are collected that, you know, help with that. That's a good point, that, I mean, there is elements of the stat process within that.
And will be ongoing through the process, so, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry. Okay.
There, there we go. I'm just curious on why 2.3 is a priority and 2.6 is a priority when none of them have blue?
Well, I think my, my question, I didn't look at 2.3 this way, the same way, but like 2.6.
Oh, I see, yeah, I understand.
2.6 is all under progress monitoring, except for two parts where there's no status provided, so, maybe it's a question, well, no, I don't know who it's a question for. So how do you, if it's a priority for year two, and yet we've employed all of these strategies, 2.6.1, all the way through 2.6.6, do you look at it and you say, we need to implement some new strategies because it's still a priority, but we're not done with it, or?
Yeah, that was, we had a really good conversation about 2.6, because we also made that same observation. And executive council members were saying, you know, we still need to implement best practices when it comes to all students and more cultural understandings. And so that's where they feel like we can't mark, that we can't, that we've, you know, really completed these, so they're, for progress monitoring, we're still looking at them, but we want to make sure that there's a cultural awareness. Yes, ma'am?
So I guess with that, I'm looking at 2.6 and 2.4, I mean, and on here, it doesn't look like, I guess, executive council 2.4, we're talking about the cultural piece of this. And so I would think that just by looking at the numbers that 2.4 would be, and not necessarily 2.6, we've spent a lot of time talking about best practices, best instructional practices, but we really haven't spent a lot of time talking about the cultural pieces of academic and behavioral success. So I guess that's, it's almost like it's canceling each other out, it's like either or, I guess I'm just confused with that one.
They were talking about how even in best instructional practices, is it addressing the cultural differences in the classroom? And so they, they felt like that's why it was a priority. And, you know, we can't, we were documenting all of your feedback, so, you know, we'll let, I mean, many of them are here now to hear it as well.
Right. I guess that I'm still perplexed by that particular one, because you would think that then it would be more 2.4 should be where they're going to focus more on, I mean, best instructional practices are going to be there, and that's something that I feel like we've worked on, but I don't see that, I don't see the asterisk that we've worked on that, so.
But you can see, I mean, they are still, not all of it has been started for 2.6, but then others are in progress monitoring.
Okay.
Interestingly, just that 2.4, the board and executive council seem to be on the same page there. Yes, ma'am?
So 2.0, yeah, I agree with you. I'm, it seems like if we're going to pick and choose if we can't do everything, it would be based on what staff has said, it would be 2.4 rather than 2.6. But looking at 2.5, which was a priority.
Yep.
But there's, what does it mean that there's no status provided? So talk me through that one a little bit.
Oh, we just haven't been able to obtain a status for the strategy that was, that's been, that was implemented.
Okay. So it's just because we're waiting for test results and those kinds of things to be able to know.
Right.
How we did on 2.5?
Right, where, and where we, what we can consider it as, whether it's progress monitoring or full implementation or whatever.
All right.
Reactions to, because of 2.2? Yeah, okay. Maybe let's move on to page three, so we can have the discussions about each, just general discussions, and then we'll go back through and determine objectives. Page three. Questions about what executive council initially is thinking about prioritizing?
So I'm looking at 4.3, and, I mean, I just, I guess I'm taken aback by that as well, because that's something that we all, we have had much conversation about, and talking about communication and transparency, and it's, it's just, you know, just, thought is, wow, school administration sees that as a high priority, but no one else does. So that one, I'm actually kind of shocked about that one.
But, I mean, again, it, it's just maybe that they don't see it as a high priority, even though everyone understands it's important, but when you do have those finite resources, other stakeholders didn't feel like it was. They also are in planning and implement, partial implementation, so maybe that's why people felt like we're working on it.
I guess that's kind of my question, I feel like there's a disconnect, even among the executive council when I'm looking at this survey.
And everybody else.
Yeah.
Sorry, which one?
The executive, sorry, when I'm looking at, sorry, I'll wait till we're done with this page and then I'll say it.
Okay.
Because it goes to the broader survey.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and I'm looking at the broad, so I'm, I'm not going to wait, I'm going to keep going. I don't know, maybe I'm not thinking the same thing you're thinking, but that 4.0, wait, which one was it? If you look at the biggest implementation challenges identified by each respondent group, the school administrators listed communication from district leadership as having one of the biggest implementation challenges. I don't know if that contributes to the disconnect there that maybe Justin's talking about, but that seems, but seems like maybe we haven't. I don't know. It seems like there's a lot of questions about what it means to provide outstanding customer service and to who those stakeholders are, because certainly some of those stakeholders would include your staff that you're trying to communicate to, but I'm, what, did you have conversation about 4.3? Honestly, we did not. So it was a priority for last year, continued to be rated high by school administration for this year, but not as high by everyone else.
So there hasn't been a decision made yet as to all those strategies, or, excuse me, objectives that were marked as priorities for year one? What happens? That is still an ongoing discussion with executive council.
Just seems to me they might want to take a look at those strategies under objective 4.3, that perhaps they're not translating to their own, that might be the stakeholder group that they're missing, is their own staff within, you know, maybe, maybe the reason it didn't rate as high with the other groups is because the customer service aspect was, is better among many of the stakeholder groups, except within district administration. Yeah, that, so that, that's what that tells me. Is that kind of how you read that? That that's maybe, so maybe it's just that, and I would also say that based on this piece as well. And so, you know, maybe that's, since it's just that one group, maybe the whole, that's why it doesn't need to be a priority for year two, yet it is something that they need to focus on within.
Right, so maybe that's a part of the conversation of strategies or objectives from year one to continue. Any other reactions before, yes, ma'am?
I just want.
I just want maybe an explanation for 4.1. I'm actually glad to see that as a priority, even though none of the subgroups were at 60% or over on it. Just, I just remember that from the needs analysis, there were glaring inequities across a lot of sections, or departments, I guess, within the district and just areas within the district. So I would just like an explanation, though, for how that one was marked.
An explanation from, uh, fellow board members?
No, from someone on the executive council for why that one was picked. I'm just curious.
Before anyone says anything, I just want to say that 4.1.1 all did go through the stat process this year, just so you're aware. It's a priority-based budgeting one.
So it was really Connie reminding us all that if you don't have the budget, you can't do any of it? So it was really Connie's reminder to us all what we needed to do in order to build upon everything else?
It was the idea that like 4.1 and 6.1, if we, if we prioritize these strategies, it makes everything else easier.
I also think we thought it's moving ahead. We did the staffing process this year, too, with every single school, inclusive of Connie, HR staff, and the ED. We've never done that, and walked through every position in each and every school. So on top of the priority-based budgeting, you've got, you've got some information this year that we've never done before, and it really led to some surprising information about what school X versus school Y, what their needs were, versus how well we were meeting those needs. So I think that's part of what executive council saw, that evidently the other groups didn't, although, you know, there's some high 50s there from the school administrators and the school board, so you're in the 50s on those two groups, but maybe, maybe that's part of the difference, too. We witnessed it a little more closely because we were part of that process.
And maybe some people feel like they're doing it, like it's, you know, we don't need to prioritize it because of these staffing meetings, that, you know, they're, it's happening.
But I guess that's part of my question. We can, we can go into the reasons of why some people didn't pick anything, and we can come to justify whatever decision, to use those numbers to justify whatever decision we came up with, but for all the positive reasons, maybe staff felt that it'll never happen. That's why they said, "Why make it a priority? I can't get a win there." The point is, there's always a flip side to all of them. What, what, generally what I guess concerns me is that there seems to be a disconnect in some of these areas, and that, that's what I'm more concerned about, how do we line these up? And I guess that's the next part, and that's what I'll wait, but that's what I was trying to get to, but, but I just, I don't want us to get into why, whether this word for all means is why people chose not to, because we can do that for every one of these...
Absolutely.
That's true.
And say, there could be a negative plus a positive, and then we just become subjective and not just taking it for what it's for, face value for what they're worth.
I think it's a very valuable comment. Other comments, or is, until we can go on to the last page? All right. The last set of objectives. Reactions? Does, does this resonate? The objectives that executive council initially identified? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Can I, can, I just want to, I'm like looking at 6.1.
Yep.
And Matt, do you, do you have any input on 6.1?
I don't recall specifically of the discussion on 6.1.
That one, I believe, was, you know, we have, like, again, 6.1 was one of those where like if we can, if we can prioritize that, and we can build upon and align the network, then we can, it'll just help improvement of the other implementation strategies. I think there was also discussion that you, I mean, in Omaha, you have a supportive community, and you have foundations and other people that, you know, want to help you succeed, and so if we can...
I just, I guess I see 5.3 and 6.1 as almost being the same thing.
I think the difference is also 6.1 looks more to the community.
Okay.
And 5.3 is, is more about...
The district.
Engagement, yeah, within the district, parents. Yes?
Is there a reason that 7.1 didn't come out as a priority? We kind of had the conversation about communication, and clearly, again, school administrators wanted to see it high, and the board felt like it was important, and everybody else was kind of close to 50% on that. Just curious. And it's a current strategy, so is that why?
Well, yeah, right, there wasn't a determination of what happens to current strategies, and it is something, too, that executive council will consider, for sure. But there wasn't an explicit conversation about 7.1, when we came back as a whole, like Matt mentioned, when they were in small groups, that could have come up, and I bet it was discussed, but I couldn't, I wasn't at all of them.
So I'm looking at strategies that, current year-two priorities, and there's only two that either didn't rank very high or was a priority from last year.
So can you show me specifically what you're looking at? Oh, okay. The, the diagram, this one?
Mm-hmm. So I was just looking at like 4.1, 6.1, 1.4, 2.2, 2.0, there was a lot of strategies carried over from last year, and really only four, well, no, yeah, four basically new strategies.
I think that part of the idea is that we still, these are, these are continuing to be important, and they, again, like, when something is marked priority, there's just additional attention brought to them. Action plans are developed, there are detailed performance management tools set up, so they want to, they thought that it was important to continue that additional attention on those. And I mean, we, you know, we feel like we've said this a bunch now, we just can't prioritize everything.
Well, with that being said, there's 14 priorities, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is, absolutely. And they might, you know, when they come together and they look at everything, might decide, "Let's remove this, let's replace this, let's, you know..."
Well, I guess I'll, I'll ask the board, the, my colleagues, is what, you know, for us, what's, how many priorities do, I just think 14 is a lot. You know, what, what are your thoughts about, you know, what are our priorities to move forward for this year? Because there's lots of work going on, and 14 is, I mean, that's quite a bit that we have listed on this, you know, with the district foundation and all those pieces, and I get it, but it's, it's a lot.
Yep. I wonder if instead of putting like a number, we should just kind of go through...
Right.
See what resonates with you. Let's see, I mean, then we can figure out what that number is. Yes, sir?
To Ms. Williams' point, I think executive council has 14, I think, on here, prioritize. Board has, I think, seven. I think next, the school administration has like nine or 10, and everybody else is around that same category, so, or less, so, that's, that's, that's a very good question on what do we prioritize.
Yeah, I also think it's important to remember how this was, this was gathered, so everyone else was an anonymous survey. You weren't talking to your colleagues, you weren't, you know, whereas they, by consensus, came up with this. And, and I mean, they got the survey results, literally I handed it out, and I was like, analyze, like, think about it, tell me what you, you know, they didn't have it in advance to think about and discuss internally before.
I mean, but I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, to the, to the point, we still have to value what they, what the, what the responses are.
Oh, most certainly.
Most definitely.
Most certainly.
And I don't want us to lose that. I mean, I might be off with the numbers on that, but, I mean, we, we have to limit that down, in my opinion, because you're really great at things, a few things, or you're not good at a lot of things. And I don't want us to be trying to do all these other things, and then some of them get put to the side, and then we look back a year from now saying, if we really just focused on these, like you said, some of these that had priorities that we think if we did that, it would, it would rise all ships and it'd help everything.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't think anyone in this room or an executive council wants to sacrifice quality, just by having, you know, a lot of strategy, objectives prioritized. I'd like to go through and just get your input, like, if we'll go through, side by side, we'll first start with what executive council prioritized, and then we can talk about the ones that didn't. And I'm going to actually write it on this board, so that I fully understand what your opinions are on whether we want, whether you as a board, by consensus, feel like it is an objective that executive council should consider prioritizing. Yes, ma'am?
I guess I don't, so, there's a lot of, this is very subjective and very, this is a lot of... So, okay, for example, 7.1 improved both internal and external district communication with all stakeholders. That was a priority last year. It's not been prioritized for this year, understanding that, you know, when you look at it, when you look at...
Progress monitoring.
The, it's, yeah, it's all either progress monitoring, full implementation, partial implementation, there's been a lot done under that objective.
Yep.
Their objectives, right? I'm using them.
Strategies under the objectives.
Right. The objective is 7.1.
Yep.
The strategies, yeah. So, but I don't know, other than the survey that was filled out by 75 community members, I, I don't know if it really worked, and we, and I, and I'm just picking on this one because it was a priority last year and is not this year. So to go on and say, well, you know, we should do this one or not do that one, I need more, I need data to say, well, we can move on from that one, we, we're seeing some outcome, we're seeing it's working, so it's okay to leave that one and, and move on. Or we're not seeing, and so, and, you know, maybe that, maybe that's what you're trying to tell me in progress monitoring, planning, full implementation, maybe that's what you're trying to tell us, if it's working, if it's not working. But that's, again, that seems to me, I haven't seen anything that demonstrates that or not, except...
Oh, so a couple of things, in terms of the community, they were only asked by guiding principle. They, we didn't have them go through each one, so they, so, I mean, that, that's why when you look here, that like community is not one of them, because they were just by guiding principle, thinking that by objective would be too detailed for them and lengthy. Yes, sir?
Ms. Faye, maybe I'm wrong, or I think you're trying to say, in my opinion, that could we get an evaluation of the current priorities that we had for year one and figure out if they were successful, where we were at, before we move on to prioritizing for year two? So if we have something in year one that we implemented everything, and it's still not, you know, catching, then we put that in year two, or if it's really successful, we could pull that off. Is there data on that?
No, because it's only one year of implementation. You can get a glimpse as to what it's done, but you, these things need to be implemented, fully implemented for several years, or a couple of years at least, before we can really make that assessment of this specific strategy or this objective led to this result.
Mr. Snow, the, the strategy implementation status piece is trying to at least provide you some, some information, though, in terms of, is there movement, where we at in terms of movement as it relates to it? But as, as all of you know, because you do this all, all the time, it is, it is highly difficult to do kind of in-depth evaluation about any of, and stuff in such a short kind of time cycle. You, because you're, you're here all the time, and because you're involved, and because you're listening to your constituents, and all of the constituents, you're getting both anecdotal information as well as some of the quantitative information, but it's impossible at this early stage to give you an evaluation on each one of the, of the strategies.
So that would be two years, three years, you're saying?
Yes.
So, I don't know. Why would we set priorities for year two if we still don't know, have data for priorities from year one?
Well, I think it's just important to be able to focus those finite resources. And so thinking about, based on what we know, based on the work, the strategy leads that are talking to their executive council members, you know, we need these resources, or this is how it's going, this is going well, these are our challenges.
But I would, I would push back a little bit in that I do think you have some semblance of an understanding as to how things are going, right? I know, I'm always pushing, excuse the frog in my throat, and I'm always pushing, and all of you are constantly pushing in terms of we should be data-driven and having a clear understanding as to where we at, where we are on these various strategies, but you, based on the strategy implementation status and based on what you're hearing, both in the street and at your board meetings, you have some semblance of an understanding as to progress, right? So we started off the conversation about the early education stuff. You, you know what's happening, you, you've seen some of the stuff, so I don't think, I don't think we're, I don't think you're blind to, to whether some progress is occurring. We don't have kind of harsh, tight quantitative data yet on, on each of these pieces, but based on what you do know, and, and in your current capacity and in your current role, I think it's reasonable then for you to look, okay, this is what we've allocated thus far, this is what, where we still, just based on the data we do have and the conversations we have had, what we still need to, to do, and this is where we need to make some shifts. And then the final piece, just Ms. Faye, in terms of your, it is important, though, that none of the priorities for year two really have been, because you, you mentioned it's not a priority for year two, but it's just, it's not a priority that's been set by the EC for year two, but that, it doesn't mean that it's a set. We, you haven't made a final decision in terms of what the priorities for year two haven't been, haven't been determined yet.
Who makes that determination?
That's why we're here.
Well, but you have said multiple times, take it back to the executive council.
So you're, you will provide guidance to executive council on what you feel like are prioritized objectives, but in the end, it's executive council that will set them, based on feedback from everyone.
That's different than what you just said.
Yes, it is.
Executive council is the final decision-maker in terms of, sort of, the implementation of the strategic plan. Yeah.
Can you repeat yourself for Ms. Scott?
No, the, my understanding, and maybe this is not to country, but just that the, ultimately, the executive council is getting feedback from the community, from school administrators, from teachers, in terms of implementation. But the highest priority in terms of who makes the determination around which priorities are being set, my understanding had always been that all these feedback, all the points of data input are relevant and are important, but that this board is the most relevant as the elected school board for, for, for the city.
Certainly, in terms of like the feedback that executive council takes, absolutely.
Okay, so, I mean, just a thought about that, so, we're, you're right, we're not responsible for implementation.
No.
Right.
But as I'm looking at this, and we're looking at these 14, plus the priorities from last year, Mr. Snow asked a great question, was, so, since we're not there, those are still technically priorities, so now we have 20 priorities.
Well, it hasn't been determined how to address the priorities from year one.
Well, I mean, I guess from saying that, you know, of course you need a few years of data and implementation to get that, so technically, doesn't that mean that year one and year two's priorities are still priorities?
Progress monitoring will have, will continue, even if they are not marked priority for year two, but were for year one, that progress monitoring and the work that's involved in that will have to continue to ensure that the strategies are implemented, you know, with fidelity and are effective.
But what you're saying is it may not require the resources?
Right.
That a prioritized strategy would require?
Right.
Because it's more or less monitoring, or it's already been fully implemented or partially implemented? And so at whatever point that is partially implemented... And so, whatever point that is partially implemented, maybe it's wrapping up, or it will wrap up in the next couple of months. Is that accurate?
Right, so, yep, so even year one was prioritized, it's not prioritized, even if it's in partial implementation, it's going to then move on to full implementation and then progress monitoring. But those additional resources that are marked for prioritization won't be applied to something that wasn't marked a priority. If it's determined to not continue.
So, are we including those strategies that they're still in planning? And they're not being, they haven't been implemented yet, there's no partial implement, I mean, there's a few of those that we talked about that they were still in planning, so do those by rights still stay as a priority because they're in planning?
That were year one?
Yes.
Prioritized for year one?
Yes.
That, I mean, that's a decision that needs to be made.
Okay.
If they feel like those strategies need those additional resources to move beyond planning, then yes, but if they feel like they don't, then not necessarily.
I mean, I feel like I have probably more understanding now and to be able to go back and redo this survey. I mean, because now I feel like I have more information where getting this, you know, I don't know if I would score these the same with this depth of a conversation. And I think we, I think this is something that we don't, we shouldn't take lightly and just say, oh, well, now we're gonna, I think we should do this again. I mean, so that we can, there's a clear understanding of what this looks like.
I, I think that's what we can do now, is like go through these and as a board, understanding that your, just your vote, what you did last week, two weeks ago, might change, and that's okay.
Right.
Again, like the executive council might come back when they're looking at it later this month, and based on everything everyone gives them, stuff might change as well. But that's what we can do right now, instead, just going through these, starting on page one. What, as a board, which of these objectives do you think should be prioritized for year two?
Okay, I'm still slightly confused on, I agree with Ms. Williams. We have new information that kind of does change what I probably would do, but I'm still confused on delineation of who sets the priorities. It's like, I'm, I'm still confused.
So, Otis, correct me, but it's that the executive council, Mr. Evans, as a superintendent, will then take all of the feedback that everyone has provided, and then they will establish priorities for year two and then also determine which strategy, prioritize objectives for year two, and then they will determine the specific strategies in which should be prioritized. Yes, ma'am?
So, I guess we're, for me, I mean, it's great that we're gonna go through by objective, but on the same token, there's a lot of, I feel like I wouldn't be doing my due diligence, and I'm, I, I want to be the least controversial in this conversation, but there's a lot of data here, and I think just putting it up on the board, I don't think that gives us that time to sit and really go through this information and, and have this conversation, or be able to look at the podcast and get some more explanations before we relook at this. I mean, I think this is something that we, we really need to take the time to be very thorough with this. And, and I get it for the, for the sake of time, but also for me, this is like, I, I don't know if, you know, in the next hour and 10 minutes, we're going to really get from this. I think we need some, and it's just, this is my personal thought, is that we need some time to reflect on this conversation and some of the answers, and to really look at this, because I've looked at this, you know, but it was very, it was a lot of graphs, a lot of charts, a lot of information to go through. And so, now, after having a, a full conversation, I just think it would behoove us if we didn't take that additional time and really look through this information. I understand the time-sensitive and your time and all of that, but I think that that would be the best, the right thing to do for our district.
What, what other reactions to that? Yes, sir?
My only, my only reaction, I guess, is there's too many priorities right now.
There are a lot, you're right.
And, and I'm, I mean, I'm talking about year one, there's too many priorities. I think that's been the disconnect with board and administration. I think that's some of the communication issues that played in from the administration down is because we, I think we have too many priorities. So, I, I would like to see us just say, you know, what are our top three or four or five, and, and start narrowing the focus.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would hate to assign just a specific number, unless you all feel, like, as a consensus, you believe we should only have that, then I'm not standing in your way. Yes, sir?
Percent, that's six priorities from the board. I mean, that's just starting from there, that we can start with, and then if we want to add more, we could, if we wanted.
Yep.
But the, the reason I like picking numbers is because when we're talking about a finite budget, you have to force people to start thinking about, you can't do everything.
feasibility.
Right. And so, unless we all agree with three and there's no, and we all overlap, then, then we could probably expand it, or five. If we all overlap with five, then we could expand it, but I would guess out of the five or four, there's gonna be others that we could talk about, or maybe we start with what Mr. Snow just said and said, well, here goes what the board said, and now let's look to school administration, and do we add or do we subtract, or? However, I just think we need to start narrowing it down.
Yep. So, that was, that's, yes.
I, I don't know, I, I hate to get hung up on a number two. I understand the concern, um, because, because we can't do everything all at once. But it makes me feel better knowing that a lot of the progress has already been started on, especially on the ones that were priority for year one.
Uh-huh.
And I didn't, when I filled out the survey, I wasn't even thinking about what was a priority for year one. I don't know that that's, I would assume that that's what others did too. They weren't, they didn't have a list in front of them. So, the fact that a lot of the year two priorities are the same as what year one priorities were, I think that's a good sign, because I think, I think that means that we're kind of, um, there's, there's some consistency from year one to two, to year two. I think I would have some concern if we were all over the place.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's why I guess I'm not as hung up on a number, because, um, a lot of the priorities for year two were priorities for year one, and so we've made a lot of progress already.
Yes.
So, to Katie's point, I just added up, and there were 16 priorities last year. And moving forward in year two, many of the 13 continue on with five new ones, and I think that goes to your point of, so nine are already at some, at some level, having been looked at, whether it's in a planning or a partial implementation phase. So, we're only theoretically, I think, adding somewhere about five or seven, with nine of them being, nine of the existing ones continuing on. And the seven that weren't prioritized, I appreciated your comments about many of those, were already in partial full or progress monitoring, and so therefore, we, we kind of know what's going on, or there's a little bit yet to do, but maybe somebody's already starting to think about how that works, and that's why it's gray and it's planning.
Yep, and so in the work groups, they are looking at, on the strategy level, what's happening. So, it's not like people are just, you know, put them away because they're not for year one, you know? It is, it's all being addressed, but just not with that intent, additional detail. Yes, sir?
Okay. Just kind of recapture, so a year ago, we set this and set all the principles, the, the seven principles, and then you identify pieces that are gonna be statted, pieces that are gonna get additional assistance. I actually don't think it was the high number, although it was, it was a lot of numbers to bite off. What I think happened was we were distracted by some of the, some of the work that went with it was pretty intensive. A $421 million bond issue, that's pretty intensive, that required a lot of time and energy. And then other things were kind of coming to the board table, and the administration was, and I know I sent emails and said, gosh, we just can't add one more now, let's wait if we're gonna make that a priority next year. And I think the other confusing piece was, do we do the strategies at the board table? Or does the administration do the strategy to meet the goal that we've set collectively with this strategic plan? And I think that's where I saw the confusion, and that's where I saw the administration confusion. But regardless of all that, we still, and you can even see it in the results of the survey, even in the board comments, I mean, there's clear progress being made where you agree or strongly agree. It's almost, um, gosh, seven to two on almost every item. I mean, there's a couple that don't feel like we've made any progress, but generally speaking, everybody feels like we're making progress, and that's kind of the way everyone feels. So, even with all of that, which is what makes me feel better with the concept of not putting a number of three or four, I, I don't know that it needs to be 15 or 16, because we're not gonna be passing a bond issue, but now we're in the implementation phase, and that's a challenge, no matter what. Every time you do a bond issue, it's a challenge. And there's all kinds of things that folks don't understand, and so you have to spend a lot of time and energy reeducating parents, community staff, I mean, it's a whole big, big issue. And that's just one kind of piece, that relates to a lot of the other piece, because it relates to safe and secure schools, because a lot of the work predominantly is safety and security issues, but it has a whole lot of tentacles to it. But I think that's where administration sometimes gets losses. We'd hear at the table, well, this is the new priority, and, gosh, what, what, let's get this one done. And I think that was part of the challenge, is working that out. So, I think if we can come to consensus, even if it's, I hate to put a number out of it, but even if it's 10, let's just say 10, I don't think that's an issue. If we say, this is really where we're gonna focus our energy, and it won't be the next, the next issue, whatever that next issue is, that becomes the next issue because one individual said it's a, a big issue, one individual in the community or something, I think that's the challenge. And so, this, this helps provide us that guidance, so when that one individual comes and says, this should be your new issue, this, I think, is the most important, you say, well, it's not that we don't think it's important, but we've listened to our community, we listened to our staff, we all had a conversation collaboratively and said, these are the 10 things that are our top priority, which doesn't mean we dismiss your thought. We do, or we don't, we don't dismiss it, but it's not drop everything and do this. And we had that happen sometimes last year, where drop everything and do this. Well, guys, we've got big work going on here, it's tough to just drop it, nor, nor I think that's effective over time.
It's a roadmap. Yes, ma'am?
So, can you, I mean, looking at just what the recommended year two priorities?
Yes.
Which, like, okay, so 4.1, under 4.1, 4.1.1 was a stat. Can we look at which of these strategies had a stat item attached to it? And that way, I mean, I think that would give us another piece to consider, to, you know?
Sure, I can tell you, it was, um, 2.2, 2.2M, so 2.2 and 2.3 had strategies that were statted, and they were statted every month, roughly about every four and a half weeks, from August through May. Sometime, I think one, there was like a five-week gap in one in there. Then there was-
4.1.
Yeah, 4.1, and that was statted August through December, and then because it was in the planning phases, we decided to stat it every other month. So, then it was in February and then May. Uh, and then 3.2 had one strategy that was part of the stat process from August through January. On the, so on the district level, these are, this is what was stated. School stat, the pilot was, was different, it wasn't as, um, it wasn't explicit like to a strategy, it was, the themes were about attendance, discipline, student growth.
Okay, thank you. I just think that would, that's helpful knowledge for us as we're going through this conversation to say, okay, well, do we want, you know, 4.1 should be important, I mean, and I get the district foundation, but I think that just gives us more meat to add to this conversation as we're looking at our individual priorities, or what are we going to do? So, thank you.
Of course. Did you have a question?
Mr. Snow? I did. And to respond to Mr. Evans' comment about, you know, we had a lot of people come in and this was a priority over that. We didn't have this type of workshop last year. So, I think that was probably the issue that we as a board, the board hasn't sat down and said, this is what we think should be a priority, and then actually see what the administration's response on to that, as well as the community's response.
Right.
To the point that, you know, when you do set priorities, I mean, you don't really set, your first year is usually a year of planning, so the next year is the rollout of these priorities. So, I mean, I, I think, right now as a board, I think we need more than anything is to, and I, this is what we're doing now, is to have this discussion on where our priorities individually are, so we could feel, because I think a lot of us overlap, and then find where we overlap, and start where those, I mean, those, I wouldn't say those are easy ones, but those are things that the administration probably has on their table, and then we could push that forward. And then the stuff that we have challenges with, start really ironing that stuff out as we go along. So, if something did come up, we could say, well, thank you, but we accept your feedback, but it, it's gonna happen in year three, or it's gonna happen here, but right now, this is the, this is the line.
Absolutely. Right, so we all felt that just a survey of the board wasn't enough to understand your priorities, so that's why we're having this conversation, working together to understand your priorities. So, I would like to go through the page one of the document. And let's just start, just, let's not worry about the number yet. Let's just start listing out, as, as a board, based on data you've invited, everything you've heard from your colleagues and your constituents, where do you think additional attention, additional resources should go on the objective level for year two? I'm gonna write them down over here, and we can cross them out, we can, you know?
Rohini, can you do that explanation again, please?
Sure, so we just want to go through on the, so, by objective, so we'll go page by page, and just, let's start writing down where as a board, I'll write down the ones where you all, right now, you, you think are, should be prioritized for year two. I was just gonna call it, yeah, I mean, we can raise your hand, I think that's a smart idea. Yeah, no, no, that's a good question. Yes, ma'am?
Rather than looking at it page by page, because the objectives are, you know, in groups, can we look at it? I mean, so that, doesn't that make sense to? So, we do the ones, and then we, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that any, we, everyone understands, so-
But if we're going to eliminate, if we're, right, so guiding principle one, if we, for example, decided to remove or reduce the number of priorities, we want to make sure that we haven't completely left out a guiding principle.
Yeah. So, so guiding principle one, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. So, raise your hand if you feel that 1.1 should be prioritized objective for year two. Okay?
Sorry, I, I, I don't know how you, it's a priority, but, I mean, I personally think when you go down this entire thing, everybody's gonna raise their hand for everything, and then we're gonna be back where we started.
We have to keep it in mind.
So, so part of, I know we've, there's been some back and forth, we should set a number and not set a number, right? But, um, part of the, uh, the point now of kind of doing another survey, basically, because that's what we're doing, right? We're asking on each one for, for votes to vote, is that it is now post an analysis of seeing what the other people voted on and why they vote on it. Post an opportunity for us to discuss what's, um, a better understanding of, of what we saw. And then, um, and particularly after you've heard already from the administration and from the executive council, some of, some of the issues that they raised, is to your point, Ms. Williams, and, and someone else also said this, is that, okay, I think I would, I may vote, I may have voted a little differently, knowing some of the things that I know now. And so, we wanted to give each of you kind of an opportunity, as we go through each of the guiding principles, for you to now do another vote, given the new information, or even opportunity for you to further digest some of the information you've already gotten.
So, I, I mean, I still don't, I'm gonna scoot over, I don't want to get elbowed, but, uh- but...
No, 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 no.
But I, I still think that, I'm closer to you, it won't hurt as bad, I'm too close, but I still think we only have seven of us here and we're missing two. And I don't, I don't think that we're going to get, I mean, I, I just think this is important enough that we should have, I mean, we had, all nine of us did the survey, and I think we need that. Again, I mean, it's, yes, the seven of us are here, but it's not the full picture, you're still missing two, and so those two could really bring input to this conversation. We talked about that executive council at the end of the month was going to do this again, so, I mean, I, I understand, but I also think that we should have that time to fully vet so that the two that weren't here can at least run through the podcast and get some understanding, so that there's nine of us that are insane to understanding and redoing this. And that's my, I mean, that's just my, my personal hesitation, because I do value, whether it differs or not, I do value the two colleagues that aren't here today, and I think that they would have some very valid conversation to bring to this.
Mrs. Face.
I would, I would agree with that, and I also don't have a problem with putting some kind of number on it. And I almost feel like, because there seems to be a little bit of disagreement as to how the priorities get set, you know, I would call them maybe super priorities that come from the board. And, you know, the, understanding that the guiding principles represent all aspects of our district and the needs in all areas of our district, you know, if there was a super priority from each guiding principle, which presumably, although not necessarily, would overlap with the priorities.
So would a, just so I understand, the super principle would be?
Super priority.
I'm sorry. The super priority would be, there'd be one per from each guiding, it sounds like a superhero, like a...
Well, there is nothing wrong with a superhero. But I'm just trying to, but I agree, we do, it's maybe something to chew on until we have input from Tony and Matt, but it, it allows the board to prioritize the priorities, I think.
Yep.
So I, I just want to make sure I understand, so when you're talking about super priorities from each guiding principle, are we saying then that we would only pick one thing from one and one thing from two? Is that, or?
Well, I mean, maybe. I mean, for example, not necessarily, but because, for example, executive council did not prioritize anything for year two from...
Seven.
Seven.
Correct.
But that would depend on what the board thought. If the board thought, well, we really thought it, 7.1 should be, you know, so I guess the answer is I wouldn't lock ourselves into something like that.
Right. But I wanted to make sure.
Right. No. But it's, it's a starting point as far as looking, taking a step back from what was prioritized by the executive council based on the survey results and saying, if anything rises to the top out of that for the board, it's these things. So that you're not overly con, and, and using the guiding principles as an initial framework so that you're not overly concentrating all your attention and resources into one area and neglecting another. But I see, I mean, the point is, you know, clear that seven was not a priority for executive council.
Right. Okay. So I'm just wondering, let me, let me go to Ms. America and then I'll come back and ask you guys a couple questions.
I was just going to agree with something Ms. Williams had said, that I think we, we've been given a lot of information today, that I know if, taking the survey, if we had had the implementation status, I think that would have made a difference possibly in how we ranked things, looking at, well, this is, this one's being fully implemented, maybe it's not a high priority anymore because we are already implementing things, it doesn't need extra resources, versus like 5.2 keeps jumping out at me because everyone, even the teachers are at 59%, that's 60 to me, round up. And only one strategy has been implemented, and we have six things in the planning process. Like, well, maybe it needs an extra push to get it farther. I just think if we had time to sit down and dig through, look at things more, that it might change our feelings, and we might come to more of a consensus together on a set of priorities or a set of super priorities.
I think, I think we all feel like we need a little bit more information, so, or a little bit more time to process through. So is there a way to send us the information so that we can, or do you, how, how would be the best way to get back to you, say, in another week or so? What we each personally see as priorities coming out of here, based on the strategy implementation status so far? How would, how would that best work?
Well, one option is just sending the survey again, but it would be like round two, so we'll have the results from round one, but then it'll be the exact same survey, so if you all feel like that, well, you can, it'll capture your beliefs. I, I mean, I should also, I'll go back to my team to see what else.
What are the feelings?
So I knew Mr. Marcus wasn't going to be here, so I called him, told him what, tell me what you think, what are the priorities? Had I known Matt would have been here, I'd probably do the same thing, just so I can understand. I mean, if, if we begin to have a conversation around, like, let's take the ones, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. I don't think it's going to change the ranking to keep looking at the sheet. Either, either we're going to know, either you think, out of the ones, this is my first one, this is my highest priority out of the ones, this is my highest priority out of the twos, this is our highest priority, and then we have seven, and then afterwards, we can say, here, mine wasn't picked because I think this one is better, but I, I just don't know how, how much more of me reading this that was sent to us online is going to, is going to change us narrowing the scope. I mean, we still going to have to have a conversation about a, a smaller number, in my opinion, people could say it could be 21, but let's, let's pick, and in my opinion, we pick today, media's going to report on it, it'll be out there on the website, then it'll come back up to another meeting in June or July or August, or hopefully June or July, and we'll have feedback from the community on what we thought our priorities were, and then we finalize it at the next meeting on, yeah, we, we're in agreement with, with this. But the longer we push it down the road, I mean, two weeks, we start College World Series. After that, we're in July. Not, I'm, I'm not playing in College World Series, but I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of, of one of the things that I saw in feedback was, we, you know, we're not really engaging the community and people think we're not listening, when we do engage, when we, when we do hear from them, this is an opportunity before Omaha gets crazy between June 18th through July 15th for us to get feedback. Otherwise, we're going to be back into August, then it's too late.
But, Mr. Wayne, what, I mean, in terms of what was stated by some of your, some of your colleagues, if, given what you've heard today, and kind of reviewing the data, if, if the information is sent back out to, the survey is sent back out to you, and there's a relatively short time horizon, and let's, let's say hypothetically, if that is just, you know, one week. Now, each of you are thinking in terms of, that, you know, there can't be 90, you know, priorities. You now have feedback from the different pieces, the different communities, the different constituents. If, if all of you then retake the survey, that information then comes back out, and you are able to have a meeting with all nine of you based kind of solely on the priorities set and voting on by you, it's, that's only, that would, that would be a week difference as opposed to, you know, kind of kick in the can.
I guess I'm confused on what new data is being presented today.
Well, I don't think it's, well, well, so, so, yeah, a couple things. Some new data was presented in terms of the strategy implementation stuff, but it's less about the new data and more about processing, right? As you told me at the last board training meeting, you know, different, different people, you know, kind of think and present and process in different ways, right? And so if we are trying to make sure that the, that we do achieve some level of consensus, a week does not, and correct me, board chair or superintendent, if, you know, I don't think a week throws us off if it allows everybody to achieve a level of comfort in terms of really processing, digesting, and then giving their feedback.
I guess I don't, I don't know how my survey results are going to change. I mean, I just, I guess, the ultimate question is, board, comma, I'm not going to say versus, board, comma, school, admin, I mean, all these people, and then how do we set the priorities? I don't think as an individual it's going to change for me.
Right. And I get, and I get that, for you, I definitely hear what you're saying.
But these are the same priorities we had for, these are the same objectives that we had for a year. And we already have 14 out there, okay? And we're talking about possibly adding things, subtracting things, and some of them we haven't done or we haven't done very well as it is. I mean, and I think next week, I'm, I can't meet. So then, do I get the same deference as Tony and, and Mr. Scanlon? I mean, this was designed for this week.
Right.
And then the next school board meeting isn't until two weeks. So maybe I don't get the same deference. But my, but my point is, is that this was on the calendar, we're here, we're talking about big things, not in the weed things, what are the priorities of the district? I mean, okay, I'm done.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I would like to offer, this changes a lot for me personally, and I'm only going to speak for myself, but having this understanding, this in-depth conversation, being able to get some clarification, this is, this change, this changes my thought a lot. And to be able to come back and, and really look at, I mean, it's looking at, it's, okay, well, what did we talk about 1.2, and be able to go to a podcast and re-clarify, and for me, I need that process time. I'm not comfortable today saying, these are the things that I would like to see, I really want to look through this, and I really want, I don't, I don't want to just rush this just for the sake of time. And I will make the time, and I'm just as busy as everyone else, but I think this is important. If our role is to set these priorities, then we need to take the time out and really dive into that and see what that looks like. I really like Mrs. Face's suggestion of, you know, in every group, this is the super priority for us in 1.1. I would love that opportunity to say, you know what, this is, this is what it is for me. Here's some that may be a little bit less. And I didn't give a lot of commentary because it was like, okay, I'm just taking it for face value.
Right.
But I feel like now, having more conversation and being able to have, again, I mean, this podcast is going to be great to reference and go, okay, what, what were we talking about?
Yep.
And just taking a couple hours out of my day to do that, that for me is going to change my responses, so.
It, it makes me a little nerve, oh, just one thing about the super priority, perhaps we can create like another category so you can market, but I don't want it to be where you create a super, a super priority and then like not high priorities for other ones, right? So it makes me nervous that you were thinking about only one per guiding principle. I think we had, sorry.
Um, correct. Because I think there may be situations where you have two priorities and one guiding principle that are really important.
And that's okay.
And that's all right. That's not, and, that's why they're set up the way they are in guiding principles. So let me ask the question, if you were to resend the survey, because I do think the strategy implementation status would probably make me change the way that I initially thought, just because now that I see what's been implemented and, and I know, okay, we don't have to spend a lot of resources on this because there's already progress monitoring or almost full implementation, I might choose something different. And now that I can actually see, as Mr. Wayne pointed out, what other groups, and certainly our teachers, we had a significant number of 1,800 responses from internal staff, I mean, that's, that's pretty significant. And internal staff is really the stakeholder to a large extent in this ballgame because they're the ones that understand the issues that we're facing, whereas a community member, if I was just a community member, I may say, yeah, it's all really important and, and not understand the work that's already being done. So I think from a, from the aspect of being able to see what all the other stakeholders involved said were important, I think that's helpful. If we were to get back the survey, retake it, and get it back to you in a week, can we, what if we were to cover that before the next board meeting? Does that work, or are we pushing people way back? And that's my question, is how, because I don't want the board to be a holdup for work being done.
Sure. In terms of executive council, Mr. Evans, in terms of your timeline of determining priorities, what is one week?
I don't think that's going to impact it. I don't, I don't think that'll impact it. I think we can, one week won't make a difference for executive council if that's what the board wants.
Right. So it sounds like we, understanding that perhaps not everyone's decisions and priorities will change, but it seems like sending out that survey, again, given all we've talked about for almost the past two hours, seems like the right next step. We will try to send it out as soon as possible. I just need to talk to my team. And then, well, is a week enough time?
Is there time, is there time on the agenda, on the agenda for a school board meeting to?
We can start early. We can just start early.
And the, this next school board meeting is the 15th?
Right. Because if we have, we've already had a pretty in-depth conversation, we've now gotten a lot of data, we should be able to send that back to you, and there should be some pretty clear results that come about out of that. And I, I do want to reflect back on what Katie said and just my looking at the information and, and going back to the page before the first page, to really think about the impact, no, the next one, sorry. There. To really take a look and, and think about the strategies associated with each of the different groups. And what I like about this is that it breaks it down into who's, who's really responsible for what happens, and that makes it more manageable. I think that's something we have to step back and say, wait a minute, there's parents that are responsible, there'll be groups that work with the parents, there's students, responsibility, school, teacher, admin, and then central office. And then really remembering that there were 16 prioritized items last year, and that nine of those are moving forward, which means that nine of those already have work being done in them, and that we're only adding five new ones to this grouping up here.
Yep.
I think that's a, I think that's just something important, whether we add, whether we make those same priorities this group, or we change some out, I think it's important to think about priorities associated with each stakeholder group and with the district staff, and to also just remember that in adding new ones, five is not, would not be a lot, maybe six would not be a lot, because some of these already have plenty of work group work that's already happening with them. So I guess I just want to reflect back on that and make sure everybody thinks about that when you're going through the surveys, that we're not talking about, like we did a year ago, all new things. And in working, in, in attending the National School Board Conference, I think that, you know, five new things would, based on what I heard in the work sessions that I went to, not, not a lot.
Right.
That would not require probably too many resources that we couldn't handle. So I just want to reflect back on those things, that as we do this, really think about, as you set the priorities, what stakeholder group that is impacting and make sure that we spread the wealth.
Yeah, we were really excited by this organization, like, executive council members were on whiteboards drawing this out, like, and it, this is how they were thinking about it, and it makes a lot of sense to us as well. Sir?
With that being said, if, if we did push this back a week, I don't want us to actually push it back a week and then we're in the same boat that we are now, and, and time does become an issue, and then we want to get into a really in-depth conversation about prioritizing that on that board, and then we're strapped with, well, we have to make a decision today. Does that make sense? So if we are going to push it back, I want us to have that free, that leeway, that if the conversation on prioritizing really gets, I wouldn't say heated, but really in-depth, and board members really have to have that debate and discussion about it and really have the facts there, that we're not strapped with a deadline, that we have to make a decision so the district can move ahead. Does that make sense?
That makes, that makes perfect sense. And I think there, there have been board meetings that have gone long over topics that each, if each of you... that have gone long, um, over topics that each, if each of you have individually said, I can't believe, you know, um, whether off the record or on the record, you know, some topics have, uh, pushed us into wee hours, um, if this one went long, um, this is a kind of bread and butter type of stuff, this one is worthy of going, going long, and, um, and so I think we can, if we, um, if we have the information kind of back to you within the week, um, there's additional time for you kind of to process at the board meeting, some of the discussion that would need to occur, hopefully, even if it pushes us a little long, it's, I think it's time well spent.
And we could, we could update, we will update this document and send it to you in advance, so you could see then where, maybe we, we could change it, like, if you're interested in seeing survey one versus survey two, we can have both columns, just so you can see how it may have changed for certain people, we'll get that to you much, as much as we can, yes, ma'am?
I guess my only other ask would be that we've talked about like the number of priorities, is it something that we can just throw in there of, you know, how, how many, because some said, some say that the number of priorities is important, some say not, so can we just ask that simple question?
Yeah.
You know, what's a target number of priorities for each of us, so that way we can kind of look at that and say, where's our median, and this is what we've found out in the survey, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll add that question to it.
I'm still confused on, on who, who leads the priorities, and the reason I'm asking that is because, i-if the executive council picks the priorities, then, then we can do an individual survey and there will be an update from staff on what priorities they're picking, it would, it wouldn't be a long conversation, but if it's the board picking the com, the, the, the priorities, then, then that is a longer conversation, so, I mean, i-if staff presents to us, here's the priorities for year two, and you're saying that's who has the final say in this, then there might be some dialogue, but at the end of the day, we keep moving.
Right, so ultimately, right, implementation, and we've talked about, ultimately, implementation falls on your superintendent and his staff, right, period, um, we've...
But, but implementation of what?
Right, and, I'm...
There we go, you know, I get it, I get it sometimes.
Um, uh, so, uh, but part of the feedback that we got from this board, and I thought it was righteous feedback, um, and correct feedback, and which is why I apologize, actually, before, uh, before you got your mark, we kinda said, we, mea culpa, as it relates to some, what we're doing right now and what we're gonna be doing over the next two weeks, we didn't do for year one, right, um, and which was part of the, the problem, um, but the, the feedback and the input from all the various sources, including the super kind of majority feedback that comes from this board, directs the implementation piece, and so that's, that's the, but ultimately, implementation's gonna come from the superintendent and, and his staff, right, um, but a determination as to what should be prioritized, um, there are a number of different pieces, and yes, the, the pieces of feedback that help to determine what gets prioritized, some are weighted more than others, and this board stuff is weighted much more than, much more than others, um, but al, the ultimate piece, the final kind of conclusion that's gonna come back to you is gonna be your superintendent saying, I heard what you said, this is what I, um, also heard based on the resources, both financial and human resources, he would be a fool, and, of course, I know you wouldn't be, he would be a fool to ignore, right, um, uh, his boss's requests, right, but he would also be a fool to ignore, you know, kind of fiscal realities, statutory realities, and then he will come back to you with a final recommendation based on what he heard from you and what he hears from his wallet, um, your financial resources and what he hears as a base on, um, kind of the, the law of the land statute, et cetera, so, so that's, that's, but in order for us to do that, that final piece has to come, um, that's why I think it makes sense for people to have their time to process, has sense to kind of come back and then at the next board meeting, to have that much more informed and, and final recommendations to him, so then, he goes back to executive council, he processes it, and then comes to you with a final file.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Otis, uh, I got confused, you just confused me, because basically you said, we set priority, send it to him, he sees if it works, and then sends it back saying, eh, it could work or not, so, ultimately, who sets priority is the board, is that yes, yes or no, do we set that priority?
Um, ultimately...
His job is to pull that trigger and to execute that, that is, that is, because that's my confusion, that of our role is that we set that priority, and then his job is to execute that, because all priorities are high, but we set that and then it's his job to execute that, and then come back with data and say, here we are with these priorities that you guys set, with the data from the exec council, and the district, and the community, we take that in as board members and we go back to our community as well and gather that, and then we come together as a board, and then we set the priority, give that to the superintendent, and then he runs with it, that was my assumption, but that's not what you explained just there.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Evans?
And maybe, kind of give an analogy on the, the entire process, the entire strategic plan when it was done a year ago was a culmination of community input, staff input, board input, parent input, it wasn't really any one person, at the end of the day, the board voted on it, but it wasn't, and you wouldn't want it to be, this is just what the board cares about, you wouldn't want it to be that, nor would, nor would you want it to be, this is what superintendent cares about, or executive council, you wanted it to be what it was, a collaborative, group think process that allowed input from multiple stakeholders that was massaged into a final document, so now we're just doing a little extra massaging of some more data after a year, after review and analysis, that will end up in another document with, really just working within the parameters that were set by parents, community, staff, board, a year ago, so I don't know if that helps with that, but it's never a singular group, I don't think, it's supposed to be kind of a, a group process, and I, I certainly look at it that way, I'm not gonna look at it and say, well, hold it count, that priority has no value, I'm not gonna look at that, I, that's not how I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look at all this data, inclusive of what the board says, and come back to you and say, here's what, based on where we're at right now and the journey that we're, we're on for five years to reach destination X, where we wanna be, here's where collectively we move this priority forward, so, and here's the metrics we'll use for measurement and all of those pieces, that becomes the real critical piece too, is what's the outcomes at the end of the day, and I'm responsible for creating those strategies to help us get to those outcomes, and these are just kind of helping us prioritize some of those things that are outcomes we wanna see sooner maybe, so I don't know if that helps encapsulate what Otis said or not, but that's kind of, kind of what I think.
Okay, with that, um, we're gonna wrap up here, so what I'm gonna do is ask Mr. Ray to get ahold of everyone, and we'll see how early we can start on the 15th so that we can create, can you both be here then, or can we find out?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll check on that, and then, if everyone can get the survey results back in one week, and with that, uh, Mr. Ray needs to tear this space down, so we are going to let the record reflect that the meeting is adjourned at 7:04 PM, thank you.
Thank you for all of your comments and feedback, and we'll be in touch.